Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the June 6th, 2011 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're gonna begin our proceedings today with the invocation offered by Kareem Burji. He is a volunteer on His Highness Prince Aga Khan's Sayyid Imamii Council for Florida. Mr. Burji has served as a volunteer in various capacities for over twenty years. The Ismaili Center was established in Orlando over twenty-five years ago and it's currently located at Sand Lake Road and John Young Parkway. Community has been involved in numerous volunteer activities, including working with Habitat for the Humanity, collecting cell phones for battered women, conducting clothing and food drives, and participating in Walks for Juvenile Diabetes. Volunteerism is ingrained in the Ismaili history and tradition from childhood and it's considered a way of life in the community. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by District One Commissioner Phil Diamond. Would everybody please stand?
In the name of Allah, the most beneficent, the most merciful. Before I start the invocation, I would like to thank the city of Orlando, particularly Mayor Buddy Dyer, for this kind invitation. Today, more than ever, we're cognizant of the diversity and pluralism within our communities with people of different faiths, cultures, and histories. Yet, we all share the strong bond of a uniting bond of being Americans. Within the mosaic of the Muslim world, the Shia Ismaili Muslims are a community of ethnically and culturally diverse peoples, living in over twenty-five countries around the world. United in their allegiance to His Highness Prince Kareem Aga Khan, who is the forty-ninth hereditary Imam, spiritual leader, and direct descendant of Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him. The Ismailis have been living in the Orange County for many decades, with first, second, and third generations living here. We have been welcomed, supported, and encouraged, and for that, we're thankful. As you know, Islam is one of the three major monotheistic faiths referred to as the Abrahamic traditions, and together with Christianity and Judaism, shares the principle of divine revelation. In the case of Islam, the divine revelations conveyed to the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, are contained in the Holy Quran. I would like to start today's invocation with the translation of verses from the Holy Quran. "Say, O Muhammad, we believe in God and in what has been revealed to us, and what was revealed to Abraham, Ismail, Isaac, Jacob, and the tribes, and in the books given to Moses, Jesus, and the prophets from their Lord. We make no distinction between one and another among them, and to God do we bow our will." Surah 3, verse eighty-four. "Pity is not that you turn towards east or west, but it is to believe in God and the last day, and the angels, and the book, and the prophets, and to give your wealth out of love for God to relatives, orphans, and needy, and the wayfinders, and those who ask and for the ransom of slaves, to be steadfast in prayer and practice regular charity, to fulfill contracts which you have made, and to be firm and patient in pain or suffering and adversity, and throughout all periods of panic. Such are the people of truth, the God-fearing." Surah 2, verse one-seventy-seven. Honorable Mayor and Orlando Commissioners, I wish you well in your deliberations today and every day. Our Ismaili Muslim community is grateful for the invaluable service you provide and thanks you for your dedication. Let us pray together. O Sustainer of all peoples, allow each of us to believe in and practice the faith that comforts us. Help us find clarity in that commonality, be it of Abrahamic traditions or other. O Lord, bless those who govern this city with wisdom and foresight to create a foundation for tolerance. Let them constructively debate and make decisions with maturity and understanding. In troubled times and moments of tension, safeguard this people of city of Orlando and all fellow Americans from those that misuse politics and religion to perpetuate harm. Help us all practice the principles of our faith, the ethics of service to humanity, honesty in our actions, tolerance in our attitudes, and caring for all humankind. Help us find strength in our diversity, wisdom in our pluralism, and unity as one nation under God. Amen.
Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the role and make the determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Linum.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's see, we have no presentations or recognitions today, so move right into the mayor's update. At the last council meeting, we had a very historic vote to allow us to move forward with the construction of the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Hearts, and we have finalized a few more details on the groundbreaking festivities scheduled for the twenty-third, and they will begin at 5:30. And it'll be a great kickoff, and this evening, we are hosting a get-together for the blueprint to allow prospective workers, employees on the site, to mix with subcontractors, so kind of a matching system that I think Commissioner Linum probably picked the venue since it's at draft, global draft. I want to remind everybody that hurricane season has just started, so you need to get prepared and be prepared throughout the season. Need to develop an emergency plan, ensure that you have your supplies and your disaster kit, and keep informed if the system is approaching. Fireworks at the Fountain will occur on Monday, July 4th at 4:00 PM. We will start, and there will be musical events all evening long, and then it will have a fabulous fifteen-minute firework display at 9:30 when it is plenty dark, and the Fountain will be up and operational before then. I want to invite everyone out to join me and our fellow city commissioners as Orlando Fire Chief John Miller unveils the Orlando Fire Department's first Black Firefighter's Memorial in honor of the city's first six Black firefighters who were all hired on June the 10th, 1968. And that event is Friday, June 10th at 3:00 PM at Fire Station 7. On Thursday, June 9th at 10:00 AM at the Amway Center, we will have the official Orlando Police Department Change of Command Ceremony, marking the transition from Chief Demings to Chief Rooney. And Chief Rooney will be officially sworn in as the thirty-seventh Police Chief of the City of Orlando. Turned out to be a convenient place because it's between graduation ceremonies, and there's already stage and seating all set up, so very efficient. If you're looking for something to do on Father's Day, I encourage you to go to Lew Gardens, because just like on Mother's Day for the mothers, we have free admission to Lew Gardens on that day, and it's one of many events that will be going on during the entire week of June 13th through the 19th, so more information on the city website. Then, just a couple items I want to mention off of the consent agenda. Some exciting news in downtown, a proposed hotel on item C6, and continued growth out at Lake Nona and the Medical City, several items related to that, including an agreement for an access road to service the new VA Hospital, and planning to accommodate about a hundred and thirty new residential homes, so hopefully that will be catalyst for more growth out there. And then finally, we've completed Phase 1 of our ITS system, and we are ready to move on to Phase 2. That's on the agenda, and that work should be done by late August. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote. We give each of the commissioners an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda, as well as to update you on items of note from their districts, and we'll begin today with District One Commissioner Phil Diamond.
Thank you. Well, as the mayor mentioned, there's a new police chief in town, and if last Friday is any indication, I think everybody's gonna be very happy with the performance of the Police Department. For those of you who haven't heard, District One was the site of not one, but two pill mills. One was at the corner of South Orange Avenue and Harding Street. The other one was over by the intersection of Semeron and Curry Ford Road. It was located over on Woolco Way. And the Orlando Police Department, the MBI, and the Florida Department of Law Enforcement did a raid on those two sites, and that led to the shutdown of both those sites. I can't tell you the number of people that have already called or emailed with how happy they are to get those out of their neighborhoods. I think it's a huge, huge thing by OPD, and I want to thank Chief Rooney and Captain Mike Favorite for their great work on this, and I know that the citizens of both those areas are very, very happy. I'm happy, and I think it's huge. And according to OPD, the physician that worked at one of the sites had prescribed more oxycotin than all the prescriptions put together in the state of California, and they were truly the Babe Ruth of prescription pill abuse, and it's great to see them gone and see all the great work from OPD, so thank you very much. It was a long time coming and much appreciated. Also, I want to thank again the folks in the East Park neighborhood for sticking with their Neighborhood Watch program, doing such a great job with it. They really deserve a lot of thanks. It's the kind of thing that every, I wish every neighborhood was as active and diligent as they are, and they do a wonderful job. Also, on Friday, the Wade View Neighborhood Association had its annual Hurricane Happy Hour. The highlight of that was the lighting of the official hurricane lamp, and the association started doing these happy hours the year after we got hit by three hurricanes, and I have to say that their, all their rituals seem to have worked just fine since then. No hurricanes, and I want to thank them for doing this community, doing a community get-together. I think it really does help build community, and it's a nice tradition in the neighborhood, and it's just a reminder, like the mayor said, for everybody to get ready for hurricane season. Also, I had the privilege of attending Mayor Jacob's State of the County address on Friday. I thought that was good, and I enjoyed hearing that. And then, a couple of other comments. Today is the anniversary of D-Day, when the greatest generation invaded, occupied Europe, and I want to give a shout-out to all our veterans, but especially those that are World War II veterans, for what they did, so that we can be living in freedom today. And then lastly, I would mention that this Wednesday is the last day of school for all the students in the public school system. I know a lot of people will either be happy or sad about that, probably mostly happy, and I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy and safe summer. Thanks, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move to District 2. Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you, sir. Just got a couple of announcements. One is, on the 19th of May, and thank you, Mayor, for this, you announced that the Semeron Business Partnership is the city's first market district. Semeron Business Partnership joined the city's five existing districts in the Orlando Main Street Program. This is a huge accomplishment for our membership and for the whole corridor, District 2, for that matter. So, once again, I want to thank you, I want to thank the staff for all their efforts. Sunday, May 29th, I attended the Orlando Baptist Church Hero Celebration in honor of the Armed Forces Personnel. I guess it goes along with what you were talking about, Commissioner Diamond. Congratulations to the veterans and to all those that served not only our country but our city, our police officers, firefighters, and code enforcement, and anyone that has anything to do with serving our city, serving the public nationwide and citywide. I enjoyed it very much. Thank you Pastor John Eric for once again inviting me this year, and Pastor David gave a great sermon. And once again, Chief Rooney, congratulations. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 3. Commissioner Robert Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Had the opportunity to spend some time yesterday afternoon over at the Orlando Freedom Baseball Game, the Florida State College Athletic Baseball League. Started up, it started up this past weekend, got a chance to go over there and spend some time with some of those guys over there. And this past weekend with a lot of college softball and baseball, it's kind of fun to talk, spend some time with those guys. Coming up so far, remember that the graduates are out and about. We've unfortunately seen some tragedies in the past couple of weeks about some of our graduates. Please be safe, and please remember that this is a passage to your next step, which is to be a great citizen of our community. Also want to say a special thanks to Amway Center for them continuing. It was very important to this council that we continue with the graduations over there, and it's also gonna be just a real special week for them. Chief Rooney, congratulations again, and I can see you this week, and congratulations to you and your staff for the great work that you all continue to do, and for that work, working with the pill mill stuff. It's just, we don't know how dangerous that stuff is. We gotta get it off the streets, and I appreciate that. Father's Day is coming up, and so I want to just remind all those to give a special thanks to your fathers. I mentioned a couple of things on the 18A permitting. We had a chance to talk with Chief Rooney. There were a couple of items that had an overlap, and the fence had been corrected, and so I want to make sure that those were handled. I mentioned that in the agenda meeting. And of course, just prior to the fireworks of the fountain on July 3rd, Baldwin Park will be hosting their second fireworks over at Blue Jacket Park, and so we're excited about that. It was a great community building, both in Baldwin Park, and then to come and see the fireworks of the fountain on July 4th, and so, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 4. Commissioner Patty Sheehan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of things. I want to wish a happy birthday again to Hazel Young, a resident of Baptist Terrace, who is celebrating her hundredth birthday this week. So, yeah, we talk about Centennial Awards for Homes. We actually have some folks in this community that are a hundred years old, and Hazel has a long history of community service. She was a nurse during World War II, and she's an amazing human being, so we wish Hazel a very, very happy birthday. We also did a grand opening, kind of, of the Festival Park Community Garden. They've been going on for a while, and they've been, they had a really good harvest, and had the mayor and I there, and showed the fruits of their labor, so to speak. And this is actually the third community garden in District 4, Colonial Town, Rees Terrace, and Festival Park, and we're working on our third one at Lake Druid Park, so we're really pleased to see the response from the community gardens. Each one of them is full. They're all in our city parks, except for Rees Terrace. The Orlando Housing Authority was great in working with us in establishing this community garden, which has been a tremendous success, too. They're all full, except for Lake Druid, which isn't even open yet, but it's been a tremendous success. I want to thank all the gardeners for their hard work, and the Parks Department, because I know it was a little something different when we first started the community garden process, but they're very, very popular, and they've been doing a great job, kind of looking out for things. We've done some drug arrests as a result of Festival Park because of the extra eyes on it, and it's just been a tremendous community amenity. Also, had a great event at the Lake Yola Farmers Market on Sunday. Top Chef came, and they had some chefs' demonstrations, so if you haven't been to the Farmers Market in a while, come check it out at Lake Yola, because they're really doing some wonderful events. Thomas Chapman with the DDB was there, and, you know, you really are beginning to see some wonderful things happening downtown. The Farmers Market was really packed, and it was a great event. And Chief Rooney, I would like to echo my colleagues', congratulations to you, and really look forward to working with you even more, because you're very responsive, and I'm sure that that will be reflected in the force as well. On the agenda today, just have C7 Small Business Facade Grant for Steak and Salad, which is actually a great little place to have Turkish food, so if you want to try something different, come to Mills Avenue, have some Turkish food. They're really trying to talk about their ethnic heritage there at Steak and Salad, and really promote the Turkish food, and this Small Business Facade Grant will help to do that, so I want to thank Kim King and the staff for helping do one more great business on Mills Avenue, getting them looking nice there, and really having that business district and Main Street really come together. That's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 5. Commissioner Daisy Lineham.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just a few announcements. I want to say to Lila, congrats for Jessica finishing high school. I didn't get to her celebration, but I just want you to know, she's one of my special kids. When you watch these little kids grow up and become adults, young adults, it's real special. Congratulations to you and Jessie. On Friday, I had a great opportunity to speak to blacks in government, who had the Regional Convention here, and Mayor Dyer said I mentioned drafts. I mentioned everything on Church Street that I can remember, but it's the newest boy around, so I did mention it, and asked them to come into town to hang around Church Street a little bit, and you're right, it's a great place. They have the best crab sliders I've ever heard in my life, never even heard of one, but it was great. But in lieu of the high school graduations, we just left Jones High School, and I think Mayor Dyer was the speaker a couple of years ago, maybe last year. Last year?
One of the years.
Yeah, because we all had to slip out again, like we did this time. And the speaker today was Vice Admiral David Brewer, whose mom was a teacher here and is ninety-one years old. His father was a cook at the school district here. It was just a wonderful celebration of graduating seniors, and Jones High has this huge honors class, and millions of dollars in scholarships, so I have to celebrate that school and all the pain they've gone through to get to where they are, which is a B-school. I know Byron's sister was the principal there when Mayor Dyer was the speaker, and Judge Perry was the speaker, and now Judge Perry's sister is the principal, but it was very interesting to not hear Bridgette say anything about the school that sits on the highest of seven hills in Tallahassee. So I was like, ooh, please don't let this girl say that today. But it was a great graduation, and I want to commend those seniors at Jones High School, and all that this city does to help keep that school wholesome. It's been a fight and a struggle for the West Side, and we thank you very much. But I want to also congratulate you, Chief Rooney, but I'd like to have a raid on some places I know. I'll tell you about them later. I'll tell Kevin I need some real heavy firepower, if you don't mind helping me with that, so... But on the 4th of July, somehow got into this thing about watching the fireworks on my dock, and it's getting bigger and bigger. So, used to go to neighbors, but more and more relatives come over, and we compare whose fireworks are the best, the city's or the country club. So, hey, guys, I'm gonna try and get a ride Lake Yola for a little while, but as usual, I have the fireworks at my home party for the kids and neighbors and whatnot. Now to, I think I've gotten all of my conversational pieces to the agenda, because we missed the agenda, and I forgot to ask someone, it's not necessary right now, but on Agenda Item B5, there was this huge gap in the response, from a hundred and seventy-four thousand, almost a hundred and seventy-five thousand, to eighty-five thousand, and I'm just curious, we can look at it, how you go from that big a gap or span in your responses to a bid. That was interesting. On B8, I am really glad to see us move forward on Church Street, Streetscape. It's been quite a while moving that along, had to wait for the Event Center, and it's just great to see these agenda items roll out now. And of course, on Agenda Item D1, I want to say thanks to our city staff for helping us move this along. Mayor, and I've sent an email to Ron Blocker, a text, that on D1, we have the District 5 Broadband Digital U Initiative, but there is an opportunity that I will be meeting with Oracle later today regarding a similar program at Jones High School with Oracle, and that is to train young high school students who are not necessarily going to college, but can become quite expert on broadband technologies. So, we're gonna try and pilot something with Jones High, and if they don't want it, we will move to the next high school that would like to have it, and I appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 6. Commissioner Samuel Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that Jeff Kuneth with the Sentinel did a story last week, referenced church leader retires after fifty-two years, and this is in reference to Reverend Canon Nelson W. Pender, who served the church of, the Episcopal Church of St. John the Baptist for fifty-two years. And for the past seventeen months, he's been sitting in as the interim rector or pastor while the church searched for a new pastor. And the new pastor is the Reverend Richard Meadows, and he takes over this church that's a hundred and fifteen years old. And congratulations on Father Pender, who we know is a civil rights leader and community leader, and who's done so many things for the city of Orlando. And then, the Carver Middle School Music Department presented its 2011 Spring Showcase on May 25th at Jones High School Auditorium. The principal, Wayne Green, Mr. Curtis Henry was the gospel choir director, and Mr. Oscar Vincent was the guitar director. And those two items were added into this spring concert. The spring concert is under director of Mr. Kedrick Redding, who is the band director, and such great talent. Ninety percent of the students that's in the band that performs with the orchestra have 3.0 or better grade point averages. So that's a great accomplishment for Carver and for Kedrick Redding. And then, of course, on Saturday, May 25th, at the El Claudia Allen Center, the seniors celebrated their ninth annual senior prom, and it was a Western theme, so they came as cowboys and cowgirls. Great event, thanks to Herb Williams and Brenda Clark, who are the managers respectively at the Claudia Allen Center, and also the Claudia Allen Center Advisory Board, the Rathman Club, George Jordan, who was also on hand to celebrate with the seniors. And then on Sunday, May 29th, Pastor Stanley Murray was installed as the pastor of Mount Zion Tabernacle Church, 7101 Lake Illinois Drive in Orlando. And Pastor Murray is currently sixteen-year veteran with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, so he is a deputy servant on the sheriff's department and is also stepping out as pastor of a new church. Reginald McGill was on hand representing the mayor's office. And I, too, was at the State of Orange County address on June 3rd, this past Friday. Mayor Teresa Jacobs, her theme was building our community vision. A lot was mentioned about Orlando and the Orlando brand, and what we are doing specifically for the area as well. And she was introduced by Stina Duva, who is the president and CEO of West Orange Chamber of Commerce, and Stina is also a resident and a member of the District 6 community. And then, on this past Saturday, June 4th, the Standing Ovation Talent Group with the, under the direction of Terry Burns, hosted its fourteenth under the direction of Terry Burns, hosted its 14th Annual Recital. Great event, and it's from children that are like three years up to teenagers in high school, and some of the teenagers that graduate from high school also come back and provide some assistance to Terry Burns. Terry Burns is also a member of St. Mark AME Church, so many of the programs are done right there in the Smith Center, where they practice at the Smith Center and also the Claudia Allen Center, so it is a great community event. And then, of course, today at the graduation exercises for Jones High School, which I believe is 116 years old, as a high school here in Orange County, and Admiral Brewer was a great speaker and a great motivator to the graduates, the graduating class, huge, huge class as relates with the Honor Society, very well represented, and Principal Valerie Maxwell, this was her first graduation there at the Jones High School, so that was a great honor for her. And of course, Kathleen Cat Gordon, Orange County School Board member, was on hand to also be involved in the graduation. And Mayor, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
No kidding? You took June's advice, didn't you?
No comment.
Okay.
Speaking of June, though. You opened the door.
Okay, before we move on to the consent agenda...
Two days, two days, Mayor.
Till the anniversary?
Till the anniversary, the day that you walked her down the aisle and turned her over to me, and you know, it's been a trip ever since. No, it's been really great ever since.
All right. Congratulations.
Yeah, big June.
Okay, the city clerk was astute enough to note that I passed over consideration of the minutes. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 23rd workshop agenda review and city council meetings? Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. How about a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Hearings, ordinances, second reading, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to signs, amending Chapter 64 Orlando City Code to establish Part 8 relating to downtown signage, creating downtown signage districts with special signage provisions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and actions, codification, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Okay, is there a motion? And then I'm going to open the hearing, and then we'll take a second motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. I will open the public hearing, and then I need a motion to defer this item.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Lyman. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, I'm just all over the agenda here. That was on the bottom of that last page, so. New business. Under new business, every year at this time, we elect two mayor pro temps for one-year terms. Is there a nomination? I will open the nominations for mayor pro tem one. Commissioner Stewart, you're recognized.
Mayor, in the tradition that we have had, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Sheen for mayor pro tem one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further motions? Hearing none, all in favor of Commissioner Sheen. As mayor pro tem one indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so you are elected. Is there a motion or a nomination for mayor pro tem two?
Mayor, I offer up Phil Diamond for mayor pro tem two.
Okay, Commissioner Ings nominates Commissioner Diamond, seconded by Commissioner Lyman. Any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And so Commissioner Diamond is elected mayor pro tem two. Congratulations, Commissioner Sheen and Commissioner Diamond. Now we'll go to Ordnance's First Read Number 1.
Mayor, could I ask you one question, going back to the second read? Is that deferred to a date certain?
Just deferred.
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending and restating the planned development zoning district designation for certain real property generally located north of East Anderson Street, south of East Jackson Street, east of South Orange Avenue, and west of South Roseland Avenue comprised of 2.9 acres, more or less, providing amended conditions of the planned development district, directing amendment of the official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of scriveners' errors, and an effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the audience, from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor?
Mayor, if I might, this item relates to First Methodist Church on Jackson Street, and my family, we are active members of the church. My wife is employed there, so to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain from voting on this one.
Okay, Madam Clerk, take note of that. Further discussion, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 2, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Orange and Lake Environmental LLC doing business as home builder services of Florida, a non-exclusive franchise, to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the city of Orlando, outlining franchisee's duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. This must be a sign that the economy's picking up a little bit. We haven't had a roll-off franchise in a long time.
Long time.
Yeah, okay, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Clerk has informed me that we have no general appearance request.
I think Mark Slue's hand is up there. Since you like to beg people to come. Okay, I thought I saw a hand.
Okay, if there's no further business, we are adjourned.